All right, I would like to call this meeting to order. On this beautiful October evening, a little bit blustery, but I love it. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. And we will now have an invocation by Bradley Buck from the Bridge to Life Church, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Father, thinking of the old song on the way over here reminded me that we are all standing in the need of prayer. We need you more than we know. Thank you for the mercy and grace that you offer us through the Lord Jesus. And I ask for, for grace tonight, for all those participating in this meeting. I pray that, that you'll be honored and that the people of our city will benefit from the discussion that takes place, from the decisions that are made. Thank you for being involved in every detail of our lives, for protecting us in ways that we're not even aware of. May you have, have your way in, in this meeting and in our city for your namesake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We do have some citizens who have requested to address council this evening, and we will start with Sharon Nels. You'll have, we give everyone an equal amount of time, it's three minutes, to address council.
Hi, my name is Sharon Nels. I've been a member of this community for 25 years, 26 years, and I'm very, I'm a very concerned citizen of the community and of our country. And I got some information in the mail from Newt Gingrich, and I handed it out to every one of you, and I have more if anyone is interested in looking at it. And I'm here because I feel kind of helpless in what is going on. And the information was from Newt Gingrich, and it also came with petitions, and of course, asking for donations. And I'm mainly concerned for the shop owners downtown with the homeless and the illegals. And if you listen to them, they are a lot of times harassed and threatened by the homeless. And these people are on the front lines eight to 12 hours a day, running their businesses and making their own living. And I don't know if you're aware, but I've heard that Canyon City is listed as number five in the state per capita for crime. And this came, or it's about Governor Polis wanting to make Canyon City a sanctuary city. And I'm totally against it, I don't know if anyone else is, but I do hear that illegals are still being dropped off at the nail salon down from Natural Grocers. And I also heard that there's going to be warming sheds put up for the homeless on the corners of the city downtown. But I was just wondering, does anybody know what the end result is? It doesn't sound real positive. And maybe when people call 911 for help, they should start doing the DA on speed dial. Also, I heard that the Humane Society no longer has a contract with the Sheriff's Department to pick up stray animals, so where does that set us? And I do want you to remember that there are only 84 shoplifting days till Christmas.
So Sharon, I do have a couple of answers for you.
Oh, good.
There are not going to be warming shelters for the homeless on Main Street. There is zero conversations about that that I am aware of. I'm pretty, I feel incredibly confident in saying that that is not happening. However, at Loews and Fishes, they are, I believe, under construction to have a place where they can go during the day when it's cold, but that's also where they're also getting job training and filling out job applications and other things like that. So it's in a, that, so no warming shelters. Polis is not in any conversations with Canyon City whatsoever for us to be a sanctuary city. We will never be a sanctuary city for homeless people, ever. Okay?
Yeah.
That's not going to happen. If there are drop-offs happening at the nail salon, we need to know about it. If we ever hear about drop-offs, we investigate that.
Okay.
And if that nail salon owner, Chief Schick, is here, I don't know if you've already investigated these rumors, but we investigate them. And if there's an owner, if they give us times, days, license plate numbers, people, we will go and check it and see. So far, whenever we've heard those things, we have not been able, we've even gone and looked at video camera footage at those stores and have never seen that actually happening in real life.
Well, one more question I have, is Fremont County broke that the Sheriff's Department no longer is going to contract with the Humane Society?
So that's what the Fremont County Commissioners, I want you to also know that Canyon City itself, we are paying the Humane Society to take care of our stray animals, so as far as stray animals in Canyon City, we will be taking care of those.
Okay, I called the Humane Society, and they said they're not accepting any animals.
From the county?
From anybody, even a private citizen.
We'll have to validate that.
Yeah, I just brought it up, and if you want to investigate, that's what I found out.
It might depend on what your address is. If your address is in the county, that might be true.
No, I'm in town, but they didn't even ask for that.
But if your address is in Canyon City, then it should be different. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to note on the Humane Society in particular, we just paid them for our impound agreement, $5,776, within the past two weeks. So we definitely, our contract is still valid, and we are still paying them for Canyon City specific animals. I would highly recommend going to a Board of County Commissioners meeting and asking them about the county's agreement, but that's not something we could speak to.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I don't know if you want to just call, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but she had mentioned that Canyon City, in some report, is number five in the state per capita for crime. And I know that some of those online sites are very inaccurate for the reports of crime because some of them include the crimes that are committed within the prison walls itself, and so it doesn't actually reflect the true safety of Canyon City.
Yes, ma'am. When we look at our, our neighbors' national incident-based reporting systems, and we look at those numbers, those include not only a number of, of crimes that occur within the prison institutions, but also in the outlying areas within the county that surround Canyon City, because those things are based on zip codes. For instance, I live in the county just outside the city limits, and my zip code's Canyon City. So it's not a true barometer what they're reporting from neighbors in terms of what our actual crime rate is.
Okay, thank you. I hope that helps a little bit.
And if I could, I would just jump in there and say, in addition, we have a new, we're in the process of implementing a new software system at the 911 call center that will also have a robust crime statistics reporting portion of that, of that software. So we should get other numbers that we can use.
Excellent. We're also very concerned about homelessness. It's a really big problem. Our police department in parks deal with it 24/7, all day, every day. We are looking at what we can do to fortify their budget, to make it better, to hire more police officers. Also, Loews and Fishes has received a grant where they can have another employee that can hopefully, I don't know what their final plan is, but the talk is that if there's a business owner having a problem, there is a number that they could call, and someone's going to come and help them beyond just the police. And so there's a lot of tools that we're really working to still be really proactive on helping to support our businesses and our citizens. The next person that is on our agenda is Timmy Pearson to address council.
Oh, did you, oh, I'm sorry. I was tuned in, it's a while. My name is Timmy Pearson. I live in Canyon City, Colorado. I've lived in both Canyon City mainland, and I've lived in Fremont County over the last 30 years of my residency here. I would like to say good evening to Mayor Smith and Pro Tim, Mayor Hamrick, and fellow city council members tonight. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address council tonight. And I was helped out earlier by your assistance here in passing out some pictures to you. The reason I'm here tonight is I'd like to talk to you about Centennial Park and an initiative that on September 22nd, I believe Mayor Smith was there, Pro Tim, Mayor Hamrick was there, and other members of this community certainly can testify to that day. The pictures, I'll just like to go through them so you can have them as a point of reference. September 22nd, you're going to see a flag pole there that has no flags. The second picture is a ceremony that was conducted by the Colorado Department of Corrections. With all due respect intended for the raising of those two flags over Centennial Park, you'll see in the picture Mayor Trautman, Mayor Smith, and Pro Tim, Mayor Hamrick. Those flags did not come easy. Those flags were donated so that, by the Royal Guard's Republican Women, so that those flags could be a part of that day to celebrate veterans, to celebrate our, and I'll go through that with you, but to celebrate our K-9 veterans, to celebrate search and rescue. And so on that day, it was not just, I will go through it, we honored veterans and their K-9 dogs, two of them who passed, Canyon City Police Department, Fremont County Sheriff's Department, Florence Police Department, Colorado State Patrol, Fremont County Search and Rescue, Mission K-9 Rescue came all the way from Texas, who were involved in rehabilitating veterans' dogs after they come back from war. And Fred Batson, who is no longer with us, was a member of Fort Carson's first K-9 unit. That day was symbolic also because we had three veterans flying over that park with their own money, flying those planes. Representative Jim Wilson was very helpful to me in getting those flags that flew over the state of Colorado. All of the flags that were given that day flew over the state of Colorado. The flags that were presented to the city of Canyon City that day have been flown over the state of Colorado, and the city council, through the mayor and the, and the Pro Tim mayor, were presented certificates. The reason I'm here is that I'm a bit amiss here. I felt like during the last year and a half that I would drive by and drive by, and those flags would be back there flying. Those flags are MIA, and I would like to know what happened to them at any given time. Anybody that knows me knows you could have come and said, hey, Timmy, the flags got stolen. I would have gotten two flags to replace those, and assuredly those would have flown over the state capitol. No one came to me. And I'd like to know where those flags are. I'd like to know why they aren't flying. And I feel that it's really very disrespectful to every one of those entities that were part of that presentation that day, and I think it's disrespectful to our country and for the symbolicness that those flags stood for. Tonight, we stood in this room and said I pledge allegiance to the flag. You have two flag poles currently at Centennial Park, no flags on those poles. And that's all I'm here for. I feel like I had to do that on, on behalf of the veterans, on behalf of all that were represented that day. And I come before you tonight because this is the last city council that Mayor Smith and Pro Tim, Mayor Hamrick, well, you'll probably still be here, but that this is the last meeting before the new election of a new mayor. Those flags flew when Preston Trautman was mayor. They haven't, I don't know where they've gone. I've, I've gone by, and I can tell you, my heart cries. That day, I feel like I have a right to say, because I created that day, I got every one of the people that I talked to you about being represented there to report for duty that day, and they were very full of honor and respect for that day. Colorado Department of Corrections came with their honor guard.
Yes, thank you, Timmy. Thank you very much. It was a glorious day, it was a wonderful day, it was a very patriotic day, and thank you for creating that special memory and for the donation of the flag.
My point, Mayor, is where are the flags?
So we'll have to find out. I did look up, that, that event happened five years ago.
2018, well, let me ask you this, I'm not meaning argumentative.
So I looked up online, I looked up online, how long does a flag outdoor last as a good quality? It says 90 days.
Excuse me?
So I'm assuming that probably at some point the flags, after a certain period of time, may not have been worthy to fly respectfully, and it might be time to, obviously, it's something that needs to be probably regularly replaced, is my assumption, is what happened. Outdoor flags normally only last about 90 days outdoors. And it's been five years.
So I have a question for you, and then I'll sit down. I'd like to understand this. So those flags were only going to be able to fly over that park for 90 days?
I don't know how long that they were there. To me, that was a really long time ago. We can ask the Parks Department if they have a memory of it. I'm sure they flew them for as long as they possibly could with respect and honor to what they symbolize.
Then I have a question for you. Why is there a limit for flying the United States flag and the Colorado flag with timelines over Centennial Park or any park in this community?
There's no official timeline to me. I'm just saying that to expect a flag to last for five years is a pretty tall ask, but absolutely, let's find, I would absolutely love another opportunity to maybe have another ceremony and reignite our patriotism to fly another new flag up.
Well, they weren't replaced if they didn't last, is my point. Nobody cared enough to put up new flags. Thank you very much.
It is time to move on in our agenda. The other person is on the agenda. This is time for city council member announcements. Emily Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Because the federal government was able to stay open over the weekend, we will have the Community Advisory Group annual meeting on the third Tuesday of October, October 17th at 3:00 PM. These, of course, are always public meetings. This one will be an in-person meeting at the Abbey Events Center. It's a pretty important meeting because we just recently received a report done by the Environmental Protection Agency called the Human Health and Ecological Risk Assessment. And the Community Advisory Group's technical advisor is reviewing that document and is going to provide a presentation at that public meeting on October 17th. There will also be a few other agenda items, but we just want to be sure that the public knows that these meetings are always open to the public, and this one is especially important for our community.
And start time?
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was planning to make an announcement about the city blood drive, which is happening this Thursday, but I understand that it is full, which is wonderful. The American Red Cross is facing a critical blood shortage, and I'm really glad that our community has stepped up and that we have a full blood drive happening later this week at City Hall.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you. Administrator Stevens and I, last week, had an opportunity to meet with some environmental representatives from the Newmont Mine, and they are in pursuit of a new water permit. And the original tunnel that helped the water to escape, in a sense, as far as the groundwater to go down through and under Phantom Canyon Road, has been blocked, and so they're in the process of trying to receive a new water permit. Because of new regulations, they were hoping to be able to utilize Phantom Canyon Road as a, basically a construction road, including a bunch of widening and improvements to that. We, as a city, expressed our dismay and said that we preferred that it stays as it is, as a historical road, to show just where we came from. It is also an important piece to be part of our tourism, part of the city, and so we expressed to them that we do not intend for them to do that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a general government meeting in these chambers, 6:00 PM Wednesday. I believe we're talking about shopping carts? Nope?
Retail alcohol.
Oh, that, thank you. Resale.
Retail alcohol.
Retail. Retail alcohol, thank you. Thank you for that correction. And also, we have a Carolyn time slot Wednesday morning at 8:00. So we'll be looking for people that want to go for that.
I can do that, I can take a turn. I'd love to have somebody join me, anybody that would wish to.
I'm happy to join you if you need somebody.
That'd be wonderful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the reminder. Okay, let's move on to recognitions and proclamations. This is a proclamation for Conflict Resolution Month. Let's, Councilmember Tracy, you're the one that kind of came up with this idea and suggestion. Would you like to maybe expound on it?
Sure, thanks, Madam Mayor. Included in the council packet, there was a memo that kind of gives a little bit of the background about Conflict Resolution Month, that it started in 2007 with a statewide organization that still exists to this day called Conflict Resolution Month in Colorado. And a number of communities around the state over the years, cities, counties, towns, and others, have passed proclamations to say, let's have this be Conflict Resolution Month in our community. So that's why I proposed this. And I called out in, in the memo itself, I mentioned that, you know, each of us is individuals, whether we're elected officials, whether we're staff in the city, whether we work in law enforcement, the courts, if we're mediators, we're attorneys, or just a variety, shop owners on Main Street, a variety of people. We're, we're involved with trying to resolve conflict peacefully every day, and so that's what this proclamation calls out. And I'll mention an email I got back from Chief Schick, just pointing out that within the police department specifically, that Commander Walsh and Officer Nellinger have been working particularly with the ABLE program, the Active Bystander in Law Enforcement Program, really working specifically on this issue about how to de-escalate conflicts that law enforcement deals with and, and the community in general deals with. And I, the reason I bring this forward is just mostly from my own background, having been trained in this extensively in a previous job that I had during the 1990s, also worked in the mediation in the courts program in the early 2000s. And I know from just my own point of view that I have to work on this every day. I am, I don't get an A grade on this by any means, but it's something that we're, as individuals and groups, we're never finished working to improve our skills in resolving conflicts with other people, whether it's neighbors over the back fence or issues that come up for the city. So this is just a way to kind of call out the importance of trying to resolve conflict peacefully in our community and in our individual lives.
Thank you, Emily, I really appreciate that. I think it's very timely. We also have on our agenda on 10A, where city council is going to be hopefully passing a code of conduct for, at City Hall, and as an example of how we are leading in being able to have discussions and treat each other and have difficult conversations with diplomacy and, and decorum and, and in a respectful way for all people at all places and all times. And it's just something that it seems like our society really, really needs right now. We had a soccer game, or it was a football game at the middle school, and, and just sitting in this football game, just knowing, you know, the comments that we get at city council, or the attacks that we get from citizens who are upset, and sometimes, you know, sometimes they're valid, sometimes they're just pretty outrageous, and just sitting, you know, just kind of having those feelings, sitting there watching that football game, there was someone from the opposing team, or usually, you know, that's the enemy, and they had gotten injured and actually, pretty badly, like the ambulance had to come and drive onto the field and take this little kid, whose mom and dad weren't there, away in the ambulance. And the football players had to, you know, give high fives to each other to end the game, you know, right then and there. And our quarterback saw that one of the kids, there was a lot of tears from the, the other team, and he just kind of reached out to this kid, and he just clung onto our quarterback from the opposing team, and they were just embracing in just a moment of, you know, middle school style, this is really hard for them. And I just was thinking of that contrast between the decorum that we have and our public engagement of how we treat each other when, when we have differences of opinions, and we literally have people in our community giving death threats to our superintendent of our school over political ideologies versus what these kids are doing and demonstrating and being examples for us on how to come together and really just embrace each other as humans. And so thank you for being a leader and bringing this to us. Okay, Emily, why don't we go ahead and just start with you, and we'll each take a whereas, and we'll work our way just down the line around. Is that okay?
All right, thanks. This is a wording of the proclamation, whereas conflict is a normal part of the human experience, and we acknowledge that conflicts arise among family members, neighbors, friends, community members, and coworkers in our community, and?
Whereas resolving conflict in productive ways requires learned skills, community resources, and/or trained professionals, and?
Whereas community conflicts have received increased media attention across the country in recent years, giving rise to new dialogue about strategies for productive, nonviolent conflict resolution, and whereas?
Conflict resolution encompasses mediation, arbitration, facilitation, collaborative decision-making, restorative processes, and other responses to differences, and?
Whereas the conflict? Whereas the conflict resolution process empowers individuals, families, communities, organizations, businesses, and governments to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all parties involved, and?
Whereas organizations and individuals in the Canyon City area offer our community tools?
Microphone.
Tools? Whereas organizations and individuals in the Canyon City area offer our community tools that can help people talk it out and to promote productive, proactive, and nonviolent strategies by which to resolve our conflicts, and?
Whereas community-based programs have the potential to fairly and equitably resolve neighborhood and community conflicts, thereby strengthening local relationships, and?
Whereas conflict resolution is taught and practiced by citizens in many school systems, universities, and graduate programs through Colorado and the world as a way of solving disputes, and?
Whereas professional associations of conflict mediators promote peaceful and creative resolutions to disputes.
Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by city of Canyon City, Mayor Ashley Smith, that October 23rd is hereby designated as Conflict Resolution Month, and October 19th, 2023, as Conflict Resolution Day in Canyon City, dated this day, second day of October 2023.
Thank you so much. Ryan, can you please go over our consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on September 18th and the vision meeting on September 20th. 8B is to authorize the mayor to sign the Emergency Solutions Grant Certification for Loews and Fishes. 8C is to authorize the mayor to sign a water service contract for 941 Phelps. 8D authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Pioneer Development Company, LLC, to conduct housing market and demand analysis, and 8E is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Councilmember Stein?
I have a comment on just one of those, and that's the water service contract for 941 Phelps. And I know we all kind of, at one point, Park Center Water said they were not going to let any of their services released for not going to let any of their services released for the city, but they did this one. And I just want it to be on the record that the person who owns this property is also on the board of Park Center Water. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had questions about, two of them, 8B and 8D. With regard to 8B, I was wondering if we had any further information about the list of emergency shelter activities that Loaves and Fishes is planning to provide, if it's planning new activities or to continue the existing activities? The certification appeared to say that there would be a list below, but there wasn't.
Okay. I know that they're applying for the grants, they haven't received the grant. Is there any, is there anyone on the attendees on Zoom, Brandon, that looked like they might be from...
I believe DeeDee Clement was planning to attend the Zoom.
Yeah, there she is. Oh, good. DeeDee, we're getting you online.
DeeDee, I'm not sure if you heard my question, but I was just hoping to get a little bit more about the work that Loaves and Fishes is planning to do with this emergency shelter grant.
Unmute.
You unmute.
Sorry. Thank you. This is not a new grant. It's, the emergency shelter grant comes to the Department of Local Affairs, and the funds that we're asking for would be a total of $228,980. And it will go towards our street outreach, our emergency shelter, and then there's an information database that we use called Homeless Management Information Database, and it'll pay for staff to enter data into that system.
That's fantastic. Thanks so much for the work that you all do, and it's particularly important this time of year, and just really appreciate the efforts that you put into it, and the fact that you're able to find grant funding to cover part of that. So, thank you.
I know. Thank you.
And, and thank you for taking time. I know you're out of town, but thank you for taking the time to be here to answer our questions. Councilmember Tracy, oh, oops, you had another one. Can I go Tracy, and then back at you?
Please.
See, I'm just looking at my note here on item 8C. I did have a question about, it says the owner on the, let's see, on the agreement itself, the first page of the water service agreement, it says that owner has agreed to submit a petition for annexation. Does that mean that they are doing that now, or only when, I think the wording we usually have is when it's something that the city is interested in. And then I have another couple of things, but we can handle that, however.
Yeah, so typically, that is the language. I don't know why it's a little bit different here, but that would be annexation at the city's request.
Got it.
And I think it is a little bit more clear in number 10, where it spells out annexation upon the request of the city.
Right. Should I go ahead, or are we going back?
Let's go back to Amy, and then we're gonna go to John, and then back to you. That way we make sure we cycle through everybody.
That's true.
So my other question was about 8D, which is about the housing market and demand analysis. Given the nature of our boundaries between the City of Canyon City and Fremont County, it's obviously, you know, designed under the scope of services to cover a much broader geographic area than just the city limits. I think it would be hooves to make sure that we're reaching out to Florence and to the Fremont County staff well in advance of this being conducted, so that we're doing it in partnership with them, and not just, you know, sending them requests for information. I think the more that we can reach out and build those relationships and build that bridge, so that we're really approaching some of these issues and topics holistically, would be really beneficial.
We can do that.
And I think it's just also important that they're willing to step up to the plate to be partners in it as well. That's the key.
Absolutely. But if we don't reach out in advance proactively and ask, then, then we can't really blame them for not being partners with us in it.
So let's go to Mayor Protem Hamrick, then back to Councilmember Tracy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question, perhaps a request, on the detail of cash disbursements. Looking at what we're doing there, we're actually paying SIRS, our insurance, self-insurance fund, quite a lot of money. The, is that, have those costs been rising? Especially focusing on the two line items, our property casualty premium of $107,000, and our workers' compensation premium of $37,500. Are those costs going up? Have those remained stable? Do you...
So, SIRS is our insurance. It's not the self-insurance for the health plan?
Yes.
Okay. We are seeing increases for next year's premiums?
So these premium, these, these were budgeted. We're not exceeding our budgeted amounts. These are...
Correct, correct.
But we do expect increases.
We are expecting increases for next year.
Thank you. Or, I guess...
Unfortunately.
I feel the same way.
Yeah. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. Couple more little things on item D, or, I'm sorry, item C, the water service agreement. And this may have already been caught, but on digital page 28, which is, I don't know, third page or so of the agreement number 21, where it says termination if no connected, I think there's just a letter T left out of there, if not connected. And then over on page, digital page 32, we have the diagram of the property where the water connection would take place. And I just wonder if we could, I wasn't sure in looking at that diagram, just where the main is and where the connection will be, if someone could address that. And then I have one more little thing.
I, I have information on that. I talked today to our water department. The gentleman who's asking for this, Mr. Allen, he is, wants to develop, like, he wants a subdivision of his property, and that part of, that part of the property does not, is not served by Park Center. However, her, his house is served by Park Center. However, the city wants to do both, so there's no cross-contamination. They don't want to mix the lines. So that's, but it's, the area is, it's a substantial area, but part of it, he wants to subdivide. And that's why he's seeking the water from the city.
I guess then that leads to more questions to our city administrator.
So, I don't have the exact where, where it connects. I, in the black and white image, I think I know where the main is here. It looks like it's parallel to where the street road is, or where the street designation on the map is.
The Phelps?
Yep. But I would, I would have to confirm that with our water superintendent.
With what council member Stein brought up, does that change this agreement potentially or not? Is it, I mean, does that mean, depending on what they do with the property in the future, it might mean that they want more taps in the future? I don't know.
So for this water service agreement, they're asking for one tap, so it's, they're paying the one fee in lieu of. If they were to subdivide and ask for additional taps, that would be a separate water service agreement.
Okay, got it. And my unrelated thing is, did we do a vote on the proclamation, or did we not?
We don't typically vote on proclamations.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Thanks. I'm done.
Councilmember Stein, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I would just, I would just like to say that I represent District 1, where there are 225 homes who would like to be separated from Park Center Water, and they can't. And I, I do not wish to vote in the affirmative for that tonight. I don't have any problems with the rest of the agenda, but I don't know if I can separate that.
I think there could be a motion on the consent agenda to remove that item and put it on the regular agenda for a separate consideration.
Okay. I so moved that we do that, move it for a separate vote, the, the water connection on Phelps Avenue.
So there's been a mo, there's already been a motion to approve the consent agenda with amendment to move item 8C to the regular agenda. We would just put it first thing.
So since there was a motion to approve the consent agenda, this would be a motion to amend that approval. And so you'd vote on the motion to amend first, which...
We haven't had any motions yet.
No?
No.
Okay. So I guess I was just gonna ask if Councilmember Stein could confirm that she was going to move to approve the consent agenda, removing that item.
Yes, I can do that. And is this the proper time to do that? Okay.
We will still, there's still people in the queue with questions, but we will still have discussion before there's a vote.
Correct.
So there's been a motion. It needs a second. Second. There's been a motion and a second. Now we will move on to further discussion. Councilmember Stein, do you have anything else you want to say before we move on to the other council members' discussions?
No, it's, it's just that I, I just wanted to separate my vote from the rest of the consent agenda. I mean, there's really, there's, I just feel like it's my duty to bring that up, because this is obviously an exception that they're making, because he's a board member.
And let's clarify that. That's an exception that Park Waters making, or Park Center. Okay. All right. Councilmember Schmisher?
My quest, sorry, my question is related to the, this topic of conversation, but given that the motion is to move this to later, should I save my question?
If you, if it's on item 8C, then we should probably wait for that.
Then I will be.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Thank you. I just want to comment on, on 8D as well. And, you know, this, we're looking at this as a, as a Fremont County-type deal. And before we approve this, is there any way we could talk to the City of Florence, talk to the county, and see if they want to recoup or to help pitch in on any of this bill at all for us? If we're gonna do all the money on it, and they're gonna have access to it, I mean, I, this is benefiting all around us. I don't think this is gonna be, even when you say just for Canyon City, you know, Canyon goes into the Fremont County part real easy. And within Canyon City, as far as building goes, we all know that there's not a lot of space left. And so we're looking at more of the county. And I, I agree with what Councilmember Schmisher said, that this, this should be a shared cost.
So I, I think, you know, as far as the greater Canyon City area, so looking at, you know, beyond the city boundaries into Lincoln Park and North Canyon, from that standpoint, that, the study will be focusing on that, that particular area. It will be Canyon City-focused. It's not gonna, they're not gonna get into the details on Florence. I would imagine that the, the cost would increase if we're including other parts of the county. So, you know, that's, that's one consideration there that we, you know, if that's what you want us to look at, we, we can do that. But you know that the scope will probably change as far as the
No. As long as we're still trying to maintain it with just the, you know, I'm not saying totally exclude, but I'm just saying, you know, if we're absorbing all this cost, I don't want to see it be going, extending out to where it touches their boundaries and that, or, you know, for, you know, pay to play.
So I mean, they're looking at the existing housing stock, and the price points, and the places where we're able to build, and what kind, and have it all. That's all gonna be in city limits, because that's what we're paying for.
I, I think they're, they're gonna be looking at existing housing stock, but they'll, they'll be looking at the greater Canyon City area, because that is the market. So it is more than just the city limits. They will be looking at the Lincoln Park area, you know, areas that we would consider priority annexation areas. But, you know, that, that market goes beyond those areas, you know. So one of the things that we see and we hear, as a city government and as an employer, we, we've tried to hire employees, and we've made offers to employees, or potential employees. They accept the job, if they're from out of town. They try, they come and look at the job market, and, you know, they're looking at the, the greater Canyon City area, trying to find, I say job market, the housing market. They're looking at the greater Canyon City area, looking at that for a place to live, and they can't find something, and then they end up declining the job offer because of that. We hear the same story from the school district. We hear the same story from the hospital. That's really where some of this came from. We, from DOC as well. Thank you. We have, actually, the council of governments tried to do something, what you're discussing, try and get a partnership from the county and other potential funders to re-up or reexamine the current housing study that was completed in 2018, 2019. That was declined by the county government at that time. So at, at that point, as the city, we stepped forward and said, "We're gonna continue moving forward with our own study, because we can't wait. This, this is a need that we need now, and we can't wait for other partners to come to the table." This is something that we're gonna continue to do. And that's why it was designed the way it's designed.
They were asked if they wanted to participate, and they said no.
Yeah. It, it was not directly through us. It was, you know, we, we were going through the council of government's routes to begin with, because they were the ones that originated the original study.
And I'll say, like, for task, well, for this analysis, I have met with so, so many developers this year. I mean, we are on the map, and they're coming down, and they're looking if they want to invest multi, multi, I mean, we're talking 30, 40 million dollars per opportunity to Canyon City. And they're asking these questions, and they're wanting firm, they don't want this anecdotal, "Well, let me tell you, this is what we're experiencing warm fuzzies." They want the hard evidence. And they also want task number four, which is the incentive analysis. I literally, the last developer we met with, we had someone from DOLA there to represent us, because DOLA has incentive packages. And I specifically said to her, I said, "Just so you know, every time I meet with developers, they're gonna, they ask, 'What kind of incentives do you have for us to come and invest and be a part of Canyon City's future?'" And again, we're just having these kind of anecdotal feel-good stories. I mean, we can talk a little bit about URA, we can talk about TIF funding, and what we can give to them. And they literally say, "Yeah, I hear the exact same thing from the other communities, too. What are you gonna put on the table that makes me decide on you? And what kind of, like, cash benefit are you gonna give to me?" So I told this to the DOLA representative, and we sat down at lunch with this newest investor, which I hope they really are interested. And he literally took me to the face and almost repeated word for word exactly what I had just said to the DOLA representative. And so I liked seeing task four, because hopefully that's gonna help us create a better package of incentives, of, to be a little bit more alluring. I mean, we are still not quite as sophisticated as other communities to be able to say, "Hey, if you build a 30 million facility, we can help pitch in free property and this million dollars of cash." I mean, we're not really quite there yet, but we've got to do the best we can to have something that's incentivizing for these developers to want to come and invest in Canyon City. And so I appreciate that. And they really are eager and want these hard fact numbers. Yes, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, to circle back and just address the idea of partnership. Partnership, I think, is super important in terms of reaching out proactively to the other entities, because of, of the factors that it's City Administrator Stevens just mentioned, in terms of cross-border housing, cross-border employers. And it's just important that we are, are doing these types of studies and analysis in close partnership with them, whether or not that includes them providing funding, because we need their information, and we need them to be, we need them to have a seat at the table to provide us with, and to provide, provide, more importantly, the consultant with the information that they need to make sure that this study is as well done and is, is as informative as possible. So I just wanted to thank City Administrator Stevens for making that commitment to proactively reach out to them.
Absolutely. We're always, always trying to partner. Unfortunately, in this one, we couldn't find any funding partners with us.
I feel like that, as far as providing information and data, I feel like they would see that value in doing that. They're just not willing to put in the dollars to expand it, to include their borders. Councilmember Dennehy?
Oh, okay. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? We've had a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, move...
We've had a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, moving item eight C to the regular agenda. Is there any further discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Let's move on to our administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. You have the written report in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions. In addition to the written report, we, we did receive fifteen applications for community agency funding. We do need a set of dates for that, so I don't know who's interested in participating, but we are planning on doing it in one day. So, Councilmember Schmisher?
I'll be happy to be on it this year. Be a nice way to end my term, it's always a really fun day.
So I have Amy, John, Ashley, and Kathy. Any, anybody else?
When is it? We don't have a date yet.
We don't have a date yet? Andrea? So with that list, we'll send out a, some potential dates and see what works. And then, in addition to the written report, we are also working on refreshing the city's websites. It's part of our website contract, so that is well underway and things are looking good.
Excellent, thank you so much. Any questions for our administrator? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Administrator Stevens, I had asked via email for an update on some of the street reconstruction projects, which you very kindly provided. I know that I get a lot of questions from folks about when streets will be reopened and what's happening with the US-50 project and those sorts of things. I'm happy to, to give a couple of updates on the ones based on your, or based on Public Works Director Evans's comments, but I'm also happy to defer that to you if you would prefer.
Yeah, I, I can give some updates if there's anything I missed. Please feel free to fill in. The Highway 50 project is currently out to bid, so that will be closing here in the next couple of weeks. So that will have to be analyzed. We expect that that will come before City Council at the first meeting in November for approval. The project on Reynolds is getting closer to wrapping up. I think they have about ninety percent of the asphalt down. They need to finish up some work up towards Central and Field. They, they were waiting for a utility line, I believe it was a telephone carrier that needed to be relocated. So that is continuing to work. They have about eighty percent of the sidewalks down. That contractor has moved work to Franklin at this point. Most of the pavement has been removed from Franklin, and they will be doing a lot of concrete work over there over the next couple of weeks. We expect that one to be done in about four weeks. And then they'll be starting work on College probably in the, in that same timeframe. So there's, there's still a lot of work to go. We do have, I think we've got some bids going out for resurfacing here in the near future. So those are some of the additional streets that, you know, some of them are two A, some of them are regular city streets. And then Four Mile Parkway, the city was, received money from the developer of the Love Site to help with the dedication of Four Mile Parkway to the city, and that, that will be included in part of the resurfacing project.
Thank you. Excellent. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. On page, well, digital page fifty-five, so it's the part of the city administrator's report, updating in regard to enforcement or the, the hold on enforcement regarding feather flags. And it notes that you had, there was a meeting in, or, on September seventh, and I just wondered if there's, what's the next step and what's, what's the latest on that?
We met with merchants and I think there were a couple of vacations that were planned. They were gonna get together with their larger groups, so we met with the committee of the Downtown Merchants Association. They were gonna get together with the larger group and get back to us. And I think their October meeting is this week, I think it's tomorrow, actually. So we expect to hear more here in the next week or two.
Great, thanks.
I did get feedback from one of the people participating in the meeting, and their feedback was, it would have been really nice if we'd had that meeting before we sent out the letters for implementation, and I felt like that was probably a really good lesson learned for us on our part. Any other questions for Ryan on the administrator's report? Let's move on to item eight C then. Let's get back to authorizing the water service contract for 941 Phelps. Councilmember Schmisher, I know you did have an additional question on that contract.
Thank you. I was hoping that City Administrator Stevens could provide a bit more clarity on one of the topics that Councilwoman Stein raised, namely that the city does not wish to have a water service contract for 941 Phelps and to have Park Center water for another lot, because that would potentially be crossing water lines. Could you provide more clarity on that? Thank you.
We, we wouldn't have one property with two different water providers on it. So it, just similar to our cross-connection program, we don't want outside connections onto the city water system. So that, that is why we'd like the, the division of property and water lines.
So the city doesn't have any concerns with this agreement as it's written? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item eight C? Sure.
Councilmember Stein, I feel like you have special knowledge into this based on where you live and the district that you represent. And I would just love to, I guess, hear a little bit more from you about, about why you are not supportive. I understand from city staff that it is not unique for Park Center Water to allow us to do this, that generally they do it when they cannot provide the service and we can. But it, that doesn't seem to be the case in this particular instance because they are currently providing this service. So I'm just wondering if, if you could share a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay. I, when I first bought a home in the northern northwest part of the city seven years ago, after I was there less than six weeks, and I ended up having to totally replace plumbing, and three walls were totally destroyed by Park Center Water. I live in an area where there are two hundred and twenty-five homes that I have been annexed many years ago by the city, but, and they are all city residents, but they have, they're not allowed to access city water for various reasons. And I'm no expert on that. I have discussed this many times over the years with city council, with, with representatives. And I have actually talked to the Park Center Board on a number of occasions. So when they allow, they'll make an exception, and, and the person that owns the property is on the board. When I have two hundred and twenty-five homes that would love to be able to access city water because they're city residents, and they've had many problems over the years. And, you know, not all of those, you know, if you talk to them, some of them have more severe problems than others, depending on where they are on the line. So it's just my feeling that this is discrimination against people who are already city residents. And so I realize there are a lot of conditions that are into this, including costs to extend water to that area. But I just think that it's something we need to think about going forward, because it's an issue of fairness. From, and that's just my opinion, and I'm just one councilperson. Thank you.
All right, I have, well, actually, I need to wait for my question, other people are in my, the queue. So we'll go to Councilmember Tracy, then Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
We, yeah, we, I've talked with this, I know Andrea and I have talked with this sometimes in our meetings that we have regularly with City Administrator Stevens. And I think he can say it better than I can in, in terms of what the barrier is here, that it, it apparently is just this longstanding agreement that the city isn't going to intrude on Park Center's service territory unless something in the future changes that or happens. It, it's just really a dilemma for the people who end up in that part, in the northwest part of the city. But I don't know if there's a better way to say that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if the city attorney wants to comment on this, but the, Park, Park Center has their own designated water territory. And we, we can't cross into that territory unless they're relinquishing their, their opportunity to serve. And that, that is what's happening in this case. We, we, you know, they're, they're saying that the city can serve in it, in their stead. And, you know, it's generally properties that are north of South Street are within the Park Center Water District. But we do have some that crosses over a little bit where we have city infrastructure, where they can tap into a city line, assuming that Park Center agrees to that. So it's, you know, it, it really has to do with the, the formation of Park Center Water and their water district when that was originally established. Corey, I don't know if you, anything else to add?
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything else I could add. I mean, we could always try to have discussions, but it is a separate governmental entity, and so that's part of the issue.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was gonna make a similar com, comment that it's, you know, it's, if we felt the county was treating a citizen unfairly, would we want to go to battle with the county or something like this, where they actually have jurisdiction and perhaps haven't, you know, in a hypothetical sense, have, have, have not played fair or whatever. And so I, I think that really, we don't have a dog in this fight. I think it is important to, to realize and state that there could be some inequities here. That's certainly, that's certainly something that we should be concerned with as a council. But in terms of this, this water service agreement, it should rise or fall on its own merits, I think.
So Andrea, or Councilmember Stein has alluded that Park Center can provide water to this lot, but they're choosing not, they've elected not to? Or is it the argument that Park Center can't provide water to this lot? Because in our notes and the questions, it says they generally, it's the question is, is this the first time Park Center Water is allowing this? And do we have any additional background on why? The answer is they generally do when they cannot provide service and we can. In this case, the property owner is creating a split lot. The lot he is splitting off has access to Park Center. He is exist, his existing lot will not, but it does not does from city water. So is it true that his existing lot will not have access to Park Center Water? That doesn't make sense.
Or why can't Park Center Water switch it over, add another line to its other property?
Yeah, I, I would have to defer to Travis and get more details on, on that. I don't have that here, but I, I think. I'm sorry. The, the way I read Travis's response was that Park Center will service half of, half of the property, and because the lot's being split, the other half of the property is closer to the city water.
Councilmember Schmisher?
I think we need a little bit more information before I'm comfortable making a decision. I'd like to know whether the existing property is being served. I'd like to know how many times Park Center has allowed this in the past. I think it is concerning that it's a Park Center Water District Board member that is, is requesting this particularly, if it's the first time that Park Center is allowing it. So I would move that we postpone this action until we can do further research and hear from our water superintendent.
Well, we already have a motion that we need to vote on, no?
I'm, I'm making a motion to postpone it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, and well, Councilmember Tracy also had something.
I'll second that and then maybe add. Oh, Kathy's got me. I'll second the motion to postpone, and maybe it would help also to find out, has the lot split taken place? What's the status with the county on that? I mean, ordinarily, we wouldn't get into all that. But if, if there's something else that the owner thinks they're gonna be able to not only subdivide, but, you know, build some multifamily thing and somehow talk the city into serving that in the future, it might be nice to see what we could find out about that.
How many requests have they had that have been denied that were right on the border? I'd be curious to know.
And, ma'am?
Yes.
And, and we're saying that he's looking at splitting this, and currently, he's getting Park Center at his house, where he lived, at the residence.
That, that's what it sounds like.
And that's, that's what, how I'm taking it. So he wants to switch it to get city water at that residence, as well as city water on the piece that he is chopping up, and gonna do whatever he's gonna do with. Okay? I just want to make sure that, he is getting Park Center now, so.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we have enough information in front of us to make a decision on this contract. I don't think we need to worry about what Park Center has or has not done. If we have someone that's on our border that requests water from the city and is willing to agree to our contract, I think that it's been our policy to grant that and, and not get down into the details of how they were allowed or not allowed to, to make that request to the city. And so I think we have enough information to, to, to move on this water service agreement tonight.
I do, yeah, I think there are a lot of questions, but at the end of the day, it's, the question, the biggest question is, is this a fight that needs to be taken to the board of Park Center Water? But there's already been a motion and a second to table this, item eight C, and that's what we need to be voting on. If you vote yes, that means we're going to table this to have further discussion at another city council meeting. If you vote no, then we will go back and vote on this again. So is there any further discretion, discussion on table? Councilmember Tracy?
I wonder, I, I don't, I don't think the city wants to do battle with Park Center, but it might be helpful for all of us if there could be some conversation, maybe between Travis and the, the district or City Administrator Stevens in the district, just so we get a better sense of what to expect. It, it does not feel good that we can't serve some city folks because of this pre-existing service territory, but at the same time, we are seen perfectly willing to serve others who come off one at a time out of that district. So it would just help, I think, to know more about how the district views this, the Park Center Water District.
I, I'm just gonna say this. I think one thing, though, that as far as the other Park City customers who want to switch over, I don't know if the infrastructure is there in their neighborhoods and that, or in this case, the infrastructure is already at this residence. I think, I think that's just something for us to really think about, because I'm sure that the city would love to facilitate it, but there again, it's another cost of, and, and trying to get Park Center to relinquish those properties. But, you know, that's one thing, is, is the infrastructure's already here. So we're not looking at existing or additional costs for the city.
Okay, so the vote right now, or the motion is to table item eight C to the next city council meeting. I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Nay.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Nay.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Nay.
So the motion to table this item has failed, which means now we need to have a motion to vote on item eight C, and that would be to provide a water service contract for 941 Phelps.
Madam Mayor, I mo, I move that we approve the contract for signature.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Nay.
Tracy?
No.
Worthington?
Yea.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, the motion has passed for item eight C. All right, the motion has passed for item 8C. You guys are keeping things pretty exciting for me as I'm laughing up. Gotta be on my Robert's Rules of Order game here. It's fun. Item 10A, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 8, Series 2023, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Adopting a Code of Conduct." Ryan Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At one of the last city council retreat, we talked about creating a code of conduct, not only for employees, but elected officials as well. And this is the result of that. And as this is, if this is adopted, this will also be included as part of the employee handbook.
Ryan, besides just the employee handbook, will we also have it in council chambers and hall outside? Because this isn't just for how we want to behave, it's how we want the behavior within these walls in general.
Absolutely. We can create some, Cindy, Cindy's already talking about it. Yep.
Okay, excellent. I do think it'd be prudent to maybe read what some of those items are. I think there might be some discussion on maybe fine tuning it. But it includes that the City of Canyon City will be forthright in all business and professional interactions, including transparency, integrity, and accountability. That the City of Canyon City will act in good faith to try and find win-win scenarios to difficult topics, which includes collaboration, respect, communication. That the city will strive to effectively and efficiently work for the citizens of Canyon City to serve, have stewardship, professionalism, and be responsive. That the city will strive to create processes and procedures to ensure effective results for taxpayers with innovation and be results focused. That the City of Canyon City will strive to work with everyone for everyone and have inclusiveness. We do have some comments from council. We'll start with Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had two very minor suggested tweaks to make sure that we were consistent with the types of words that we were using. So I would just ask that number three, that serve be service, and that responsive be responsiveness, that way it flows with stewardship and professionalism. But I commend the city's efforts in this regard.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamrick, or Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I've got several comments. The, this started out as a, as a code of conduct for city council members, okay? And we're trying to broaden it to include the city staff as well, which is, which I think is fine and laudable and something that we will be discussing how to do here tonight, which, which I am in support of. But as it's written, it, right now, that it, we start off the resolution talking about city council, and then all of a sudden, we jump to the entire city. And so I think that there needs to be words in the whereas clauses that we're, that we're considering two entities here, city council and city staff as a whole. And, and so, so, you know, where we say, whereas the city council has adopted certain rules or procedure for city council meetings, which have been amended from time to time by city council, and we just need another whereas to extend it to staff, essentially. And my other comment is, is kind of structural, and, and for the most part, I'm in favor of all of the words that we have here, but I don't think that we're saying exactly what we mean yet. Because we say that, for instance, on number one, the City of Canyon City will strive to be forthright in all business and professional interactions, period. Transparency, integrity, and accountability. We're not saying what we expect those words to mean. And so, so I think it needs to be modified by saying, the City of Canyon City will strive to be forthright in all business and professional interactions by committing to. And then list, or list. The, the second one, the City of Canyon City will act in good faith to try to find win-win scenarios to difficult situations by fostering the next bullets. And number three, the City of Canyon City will strive to effectively and efficiently work for citizens of Canyon City through, and then the following bullets. And number four, the City of Canyon City will strive to create processes and procedures to ensure effective results for taxpayers by being, and then the following bullets.
By being innovative?
Innovative and results, and probably an and in between, maybe after the next or the last one with an and, because we do intend them all to be inclusive.
What about number five?
The, by being inclusive, probably.
By being, so that's also by being?
Yes, by being inclusive. And maybe we just roll that up into the top one. It's a structural thing, and, you know, I'm good with almost anything there. The one, the one thing that the, the, the one topic that I think that we're missing from this list, okay, so those are my comments on kind of the words and, and structure, but, but I think there's a topic we're missing, and I think that is, it comes really under service and stewardship. And I think that it's important to make some statement there about service and stewardship of public assets and funds. Because that is, that to me is what you're a steward of, of something, whether it's, whether it's an asset, or money, or whatever. And, and so stewardship, to me, has a specific meaning, and I think that you need to tie it to some specific thing, like public assets and funds.
So we do have that they will strive to effectively and efficiently work for citizens of Canyon City through stewardship. Is, do you want something above and beyond that? That's on number three.
Yeah, number three. It probably should read service and stewardship, and I'm recommending that we, that, that a service comma and stewardship of public assets and funds, to make the public assets and funds related to stewardship and not necessarily service.
Well, could we give stewardship its own bullet?
That would be fine, too.
Because in that way, because otherwise, there's stewardship over many things, including public assets and funds, but if it gives it its own bullet?
Sure.
It might be more inclusive of all those things we wish to see happen.
Okay.
Okay. This is gonna be really fun, too.
I like it. I mean, I like, I like the idea, I like the concepts that we've, we've captured, and I just, I think it needs a little bit wording to be more clear.
Corey, our attorney, Mayor Protim wanted to see if we could expand our whereas to not just be about city council, but, but about city staff as a whole? Do you have any recommendations on how to accommodate?
Yeah, I think you could add a third whereas clause between the, the third, between what is now the second and third, that says something like, whereas the city council desires to provide guidance for, you know, whether you want to refer to it as a culture of the city, or provide guidance for how city staff implements the policies of the city council, something along those lines.
Absolutely, I'd be great.
Whereas the city council desires to provide guidance for how city staff implements policies?
Of the city council, yeah. Because that, I mean, ultimately, that is the job of the city staff through the city administrator, is to implement the policies of council.
I actually preferred your first suggestion a little bit better about culture.
Yeah.
Because I think that it's, I think you could read it a little too narrowly about...
Otherwise, it sounds really bossy and demanding and not providing, like, we're a team here, let's all work together.
But I think if you said, whereas the city council desires to provide guidance for the city's culture, that that's broader and kind of, it reads better to me.
So I am seeking a motion with several amendments, and I'll read them off.
And can I just, to take what Councilmember Schmisher and Mayor Protim, how about whereas the city council desires to provide guidance in fostering the culture of the city? I think that sort of fits with the not being bossy, but, but that's really what it's doing is fostering a culture.
So in the, the motion, well, in the first whereas, add an S to city council meetings. We'll add a third whereas, as the third one in line that says, whereas the city council desires to provide guidance in fostering the culture of the city. On item one, we will add professional interactions by committing to. Number two?
And, and, Madam Mayor, and with a, next to the last, after integrity, and?
Integrity, comma, and?
Yes.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I actually preferred Mayor Protim Hamrick's suggestion on that one of by acting with.
Oh, is by acting with? Oh, okay. I wrote it down wrong.
That works, I actually said committing to, but acting with...
I'm sorry.
Acting with is fine.
So item one would be professional interactions by acting with, and then adding integrity, comma, and. Add a number two, scenarios to difficult topics by fostering, and then respect, comma, and. Item number three, work for the citizens of Canyon City through, with a bullet for service, a separate bullet for stewardship, changing responsive to responsiveness, and then professionalism, comma, and. Number four, amending it to be effective results for taxpayers by being, changing the word to innovative, comma, and. Item five, the City of Canyon City will strive to work with everyone for everyone by being bullet point inclusive. Yes?
I think there's one edit, and I may have missed it if you said it, but stewardship of public assets and funds.
We decided we were gonna keep it broad.
We're gonna keep it broad.
We just gave it its own bullet, instead of just being with service, unless there's something, unless I missed that. Because there's more to stewardship than just assets and funds. And then it talks about being effectively and efficiently in the line.
Madam Mayor, do you have an example of what you think is an example of stewardship that doesn't cover assets or funds?
Our public lands, like the, the public parks, I suppose, Red Canyon, Temple Canyon, being a good steward of, of those lands.
The, like, being a good...
Yes.
Our tree, our urban forest.
But I'm also...
I don't know if you consider that an asset technically or not.
I'm also fine, because we've separated service as its own to say stewardship of public assets and funds.
If that would be all right with you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to see of, of assets and funds, because I believe assets include, is pretty inclusive. That includes urban forests and parks and water, water parks and things like that.
Okay. So stewardship with us on bullet will be stewardship of public assets and funds. Okay. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this code of conduct for the city council, our city staff, and also the expectations that we want to really give this to the people of Canyon City overall, in the month of being a collaborative society that sees the humanity in each other and wanting to work together with decorum and diplomacy?
And like, and in the spirit of conflict resolution.
Yes, that was what I was looking for. I would like to say a comment, that I am incredibly grateful for our city council, who are exemplars of all of these things. When I meet with mayors, whether it's at CML or at the mayor's retreat, there's always talk about, how do I control the city council that is going? Bonkers.
They'll give us a...
And we don't have that, and we, each and every one of us are very opinionated. I mean, you have to have opinions to be able to have the thick skin to stand up here and to make tough decisions and, and to weather the storm, and to also have sensitivity to the public. And I, and I appreciate that although sometimes we may differ in our opinions, that you always keep what's best for Canyon City overall in mind as the overall objective, and I'm really grateful for each and every one of you for what you do. And I am also grateful to our staff that I feel like does their best as they can, too. I don't think this is a comment, is a code, because there's huge problems, I think, as a code, because they're just leading out in being proactive and advocates for this in general throughout our city and to humankind in general. So there has been a vote or a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. I look forward to seeing that in, at Sea Hall and in our handbooks. It is time to move on to item 10B. This is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 14, Series of 2023, entitled, "A Resolution of Canyon City, Colorado, Opposing Proposition HH: An Endu Limitation on Municipal Budgets and Local Control of Property Tax Relief." Ryan, do you want to start, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to start. You know, Tatch, you have a resolution considering opposition of Proposition HH. Many cities, counties, and special districts are taking positions against Proposition HH, primarily because it's a poorly written piece of legislation. It creates an abundance of ambiguity related to property tax, and it attempts to subvert elements of local control. What you have in your packet is an example that was provided by CML. We have inserted some of the specifics for Canyon City. You also have, there was a link provided in the packet as well, to CML's page regarding Proposition HH, and I'd pass it over to our city attorney to talk a little bit more about Proposition HH as well.
I don't know how much I can add to that, other than it is extraordinarily complex. There are a lot of issues embedded in it. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any, but there, there are multiple components to it, and I think that from CML's perspective, ultimately, it's a local control issue, especially taking into account that the state doesn't have a property tax. And so what it is doing is acting in a way to impact property tax collected by and for other governmental entities.
Hmm, that's a good clarification, because when you read it, like, if you just read it as is, it sounds more like, can't, we want to keep all of our own property tax, and we don't want the state to take away from us, which is great. We definitely agree with that. But then it's a little bit misleading, because it says it can provide tax relief, allegedly. Do you have any comments on that?
The, this was certainly triggered by high assessments, and again, the, the impact of those high assessments on property tax bills, but again, when you look at your property tax bill, there is no line item for the state of Colorado.
Mm-hmm, so this is a way for them to become a property tax collector? Interesting.
I mean, there are certainly elements related to taper refunds that are, are state issues, but as it relates to, I think, the, the impact on local control, it is the impact on property tax.
Okay, so we have some council members which, they're lined up in the queue, but we also have somebody from Fremont County that would like to address city council on this item. Would you like to hear from them first before we start?
Actually, Stacy Seifert's not here tonight, so...
Oh, so Jennifer's here, is here?
On an individual basis, I think, or?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, so Jennifer, come on up, we would love to hear from you. Yeah, so Jennifer, come on up, we would love to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, Protem Mayor Hammerick, and the entire City Council. My name is Jennifer Irvin, and I'm a resident of Fremont County. I've lived here forty-five years of my, I mean, forty-five years of my forty-seven years of life, and I currently reside in the city limits. My husband and I both grew up in Canyon City, and we are raising our kids here in Canyon City. I usually can't come to these meetings, because I volunteer a lot in the community, and I work, and so I usually end up listening to these meetings after the fact. So, I'm really proud to be standing here today, and I thought it was important to come and speak tonight. I'm here tonight to stand in favor of your Resolution 14 today, which is related to Proposition HH. I would note that the Fremont County Board of County Commissioners has also adopted a similar resolution, and I would also note that the Fremont County Republican Central Committee has also unanimously voted in opposition to Proposition HH. But I would say that this is not a Republican issue, is not a Democrat issue, this is a Colorado issue. And Coloradoans, Fremont County citizens, and City of Canyon City voters, we deserve better. There are many reasons why Prop HH is a bad deal, and I could discuss this in detail, but you have great backup in your packet from the Colorado Municipal League, and there are similar position papers that are published by other organizations such as Colorado Counties Incorporated. As was discussed earlier tonight, this is a complex ballot issue, but to put it in the simplest terms, the ballot language begins by stating, this shall the state reduce property taxes. And this is really misleading, because the only reason why you put an item on the ballot issue such as this is that you have to, because only measures like this are required to be paid, put on the ballot if they increase your taxes. And so this is a recurrent requirement of Tabor, also known as the Taxpayer Bill Rights, and this proposition, I would submit to you, effectively guts Tabor. So, in closing, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, because I think you have a lot of great backup in your packet, but I urge all voters to get informed about this and educated about this, and to vote no on Proposition HH. I want to urge other Fremont County municipalities and special districts to adopt similar resolutions in opposition, and I urge you tonight, as City Council, to adopt your Resolution 14 this evening. Finally, I want to thank you, the mayor, Mayor Protem, and the entire City Council. It's a tough job that you guys have tonight. Not a lot of people are really involved in local government and really understand what's going on, so I really want to applaud you for all the time that you take out of your busy lives. You guys don't get paid a lot to do all this, and it's really a a labor of love, so thank you for considering this on your agenda this evening.
Thank you for being here tonight, Jennifer, and for addressing council. Corey, did you have any reactions?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. We'll start with Councilmember Schmisher and then Tracy.
I have a rogue box this evening that.
Oh, lights up on its own.
So, I would be happy to see the Florida Councilwoman Tracy.
Councilmember Tracy, and then Mayor Protem Hammerick.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I have mixed feelings about even taking a vote on this, and I'll in just a second, I'll ask maybe Attorney Hoffman would like to comment more specifically about how a home rule city, which is what we are, kind of fits in differently to what this proposition proposes. But I in in my mixed feelings, and for example, there there's at least one good piece in there about making the senior property exemption portable, so that seniors could actually move from one place to another and retain that tax exemption that senior citizens have under the state law. So, there's some good things in there, but I I think for me, it's going to come down to that one key issue, and that is that we really need to keep sending the message, regardless of political party, and I don't match with some of the others here, but we do keep need to keep sending the message that I testified to last spring, that this is a local control issue, and sometimes the state tends to want to overstep their bounds on that. And Attorney Hoffman, I wondered if you could just briefly say how a home rule city fits into this or doesn't?
And it's not really a Proposition HH issue, but it is related, and there was a bill passed, Senate Bill 303, also known as the quote "truth in taxation provision" that would only take effect if Proposition HH passes. That will not apply to Canyon City. That does not apply to home rule municipalities, and it relates to how a local government can increase its property tax without a vote, but even then, without a vote of the electors, but even then, not above the Tabor limit. So, Tabor still applies. If you you have a mill levy that was approved by the voters, if you want to increase your mill levy over that amount, you still have to go to an election, but in terms of temporary tax increases, it provides a mechanism for other local governments, other than home rule municipalities, to do so without going to the electors, again, above the current rate, but short of the Tabor limit. But it so that would apply to special districts, it would certainly apply to Fremont County, but does not apply to the city.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The I did jump on a website before I came to chambers tonight. It's a commonsenseinstitute.com, and on there, they have a property tax calculator. I can say they did calculate or report of the 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 2023 property tax bill for the Hammerick residents correctly. And but they also look at 2024, what the what our property tax bill would have been without any changes, what the property tax bill would be if HH passes, and the in 2023, our home is valued right around $2,000. Okay, in 2024, because of the increases that we've seen in property values, our property tax bill would jump to almost $2,600. Under HH, this website reports that the property tax bill that we would see would be about $2370 or $130 less, which is a tax cut than a present. But to get that, we if the Hammerick household votes for this, we would be relinquishing our over $5,000 Tabor rebate, and that's over ten years, about 500 bucks a year. But we would be relinquishing that rebate to get that 170 bucks a year.
Okay. Any further discussion by the council? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to share, I I spent several hours this weekend looking into this, reading the Colorado Municipal League information, reading the Blue Book that arrived in the mail, reading other special districts' information, the Colorado Counties Incorporated, the Colorado Association of School Boards, and I still, like, there's a lot of of perhaps misleading information, I think, in a lot of of that. So, I actually went and read the forty-eight pages of Senate Bill and tried to actually really understand what it's what it's doing. And at the end of the day, while I 110% support the idea of seniors having being able to port their exemption, and I absolutely support any additional funding that we can give to our schools, I can't countenance another diversion or another preemption of local control, where you essentially have the state trying to divert money from local coffers into the state coffers for them to dole back out at their discretion as to where it goes. So, for me, while I I completely agree with Councilwoman Tracy that there are some really good things in Proposition HH, and it was a tough call and one that I spent quite a bit of time researching, it's not not one that I can support, because I think it does it does damage our our ability to control what happens here in Canyon City at a local level and to make those decisions ourselves.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that City Council approve Resolution 14, series of 2023, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Opposing Proposition HH: An Undue Limitation on Municipal Budgets and Local Control of Property Tax Relief."
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Tracy?
I just wanted to mention, thank you, Madam Mayor, that property tax, just to be clear, I don't think we've said this yet. If we did, then I dozed off, and sorry about that. But property tax itself, the revenue from that, is really a very small part of the city's budget. It's just the nature of our budget that we rely much more heavily on sales tax and other revenue streams. I think property tax may contribute about 4% of the city's revenue, but aside from that, there are all these issues that we've been discussing, and it's just important, I think, to send that message about local control.
Even though it'd be a small number for Canyon City, it's a big number overall for Fremont County citizens, and it's a principle across the entire state. Any further discussion? I'll call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B. Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammerick.
Aye.
All right, this resolution opposing HH has passed. We're on item 10C, second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 10, series of 2023, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Certain Sections of Chapter 5.12 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Contractor Licensing."
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a second reading. We have not received any additional comments from any contractors, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Any discussion on from City Council on this second reading? If not, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor? I'm I move that we approve Ordinance 10, series 2023, for Title V, Chapter 5.12, Contractor Licensing of the Canyon City Municipal Code.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B. Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammerick.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 10D is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 9, series of 2023, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Adding a New Section 9.24.070 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Theft and Disposition of Shopping Carts." We have had this before at General Government Committee, where there's a lot of discussion on it. This is the first time it's coming to City Council for actual vote for the ordinance. There'll be two votes ultimately, but this will be the first of two. We'll turn the time over now to Ryan Stevens. I also would like to invite Chief Schick to come on up and join the conversation.
Yeah, I'll cede most of my time to Chief Schick to talk about this ordinance. PD, who has worked mostly on this, but we have seen, especially this year, a lot of activity as as it relates to shopping carts and shopping cart theft, shopping carts on trails and, you know, streets and alleys, and we see a lot of complaints on See Click Fix regarding these shopping carts, and this was an ordinance that I believe he may still be online. Aaron Malaco, one of our downtown business owners and property owners, suggested, and the police department picked up that suggestion and looked at various options and worked with the city attorney to come with what was presented here in front of you. Chief Schick? Anything to add?
Well, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Madam Mayor, members of council, just to echo off of what Mr. Stevens had to offer, yeah, this is this is overdue. You don't have to drive very far around the city to notice that we have folks utilizing these carts for purposes other than what they were intended to provide. So, we're trying to work smartly with with our community businesses, and part of this this ordinance that you've you've seen requires them to establish and maintain a shopping cart plan to help maintain those carts a little more effectively. And it it will empower us to identify those carts, because they'll be required by ordinance to have the proper signage. Signage will be on property, on the premises, announcing not to remove the carts from those properties, and this ordinance gives us leverage to engage people in that capacity and reclaim those carts and return them to the property owners, the proper property owners, and try and remove them from our parks and our rivers and all the other places that we we seem to find these things. And as Mr. Stevens indicated, very thankful to Mr. Malaco for taking a lead on this and helping us identify these pathways.
Thank you, Chief. Any discussion from the council? See, we we received the red line version with a lot of edits that were suggested from our General Government Meeting, so thank you for doing that. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Chief Schick, for the dedication that you and your staff have shown in reaching out to businesses that have shopping carts to ensure that they were aware of the ordinance and had a chance to provide input into it. I also wanted to thank you in particular. I noticed upon reading it that shopping cart, being defined as a basket which is mounted on wheels, could potentially impact our laundromats as well, so just thank you for reaching out to them today.
Yes, ma'am.
As well to to see whether or not they do have such carts, and thank you for your continued efforts in that regard. My question is related to, I know there are two, or I knew you had mentioned that there are two proprietors in the city that would be unwilling to prosecute for violations of possession possessing a shopping cart outside of the ordinance, and I was wondering how that would affect the potential implementation of the ordinance. Thanks.
Well, Mr. Hoffman, you can jump in any time, but I believe the way this ordinance is written, it it we will still have the ability to reclaim that property and return it to its proper owner, even though we're not leveraging criminal charges or or charges against them in regards to this ordinance.
So, we would only be able to pursue criminal charges if it is with a business that is willing to prosecute?
And it's not only the willingness to prosecute, it's actually having that plan in place that the chief mentioned, and I think it's probably worth noting that I I we wouldn't normally go, frankly, to Calif- the state of California for guidance.
No.
But the state of California actually has a state law on this, and so many of the local ordinances are based on the state law in California, and what we seek to balance is the impact that shopping carts have on our community when they are removed from from the business, with assuring that we are not enforcing in such a manner that it is geared to only at the homeless population. And so this sort of navigates that by having that plan in place, which does create the criminal liability. But even if a even if a business isn't willing to prosecute criminally, it makes it no less of an impact on the city. So, that's why it's sort of that two tiers, where the city can still take take the action to get the shopping cart and and confiscate it essentially, even if it can't prosecute criminally.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mayor Protem Hammerick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The when we discussed this in our General Government Meeting, the one of the things that that we discussed was that there were, was it Aurora that had such a ordinance? There was a city up north somewhere that had such an ordinance, and what they had was a one-page form that cities would fill out to fulfill the requirements of the plan. And the I was hopeful that we would see that on this ordinance.
I don't know if you can have that on the ordinance, but it's something you'd have for administratively.
Right, I think the document would be to implement, but it wouldn't be part of the ordinance itself.
It would not be, so it'd be an implementation that that and that would be our intent is to have a form that a business could fill out without having to try and parse all the words and understand our intent.
Correct. The the intent would be to have a one, at most two-page form that would be filled out that would act as the plan. It's my understanding, though, that a lot of these businesses are, you know, because they're already doing this in another state, they they actually have their own templates for some of these plans.
Great. Great. That would be good if you could even reach out perhaps to some of them to see what they're doing. The, the, the other question that I have is if we, if council passes this ordinance, what, what would be our implementation plan? Would there be, would we envision a grace period where people with shopping carts are notified? Or would we envision that we just stop them and say, empty it out and this is now confiscated?
And I also think as we're saying this, how long do we give the businesses to, to do what they need to do to lock up their carts? Because that's an extra added expense to them as well.
Well, they just have to bring it in at night.
So I noticed that there is a, in section three, it's been rewritten to say the ordinance shall be effective blank dates, blank date after final publication. So I think that's up to us to determine when that period of time would start. I had asked Chief Schick if businesses expressed how long they would need, and he, he were here, so if you, if you would like to provide that response, I'm happy to.
Sure. I, it's a mixed bag. Most of our local businesses will need some time to adjust and get, get the carts labeled properly, signage affixed to the carts, signage around the properties, and then establish that control plan and implement it. Most, or several of our, particularly our, our corporate offices are in a pretty good position to come into compliance pretty quickly, although they have to run part of that control, the control plan ultimately through the corporate office. But they are, just for instance, Walmart, they, they control those, those things pretty well, and they are marked and, and they have personnel assigned to managing those things pretty effectively. But I, again, as Councilwoman Schmisher indicated, that would be council's will to determine that timeframe, and we'd work well within that to help educate all of our business owners and then the public at large so that we gave everybody an adequate opportunity to come into compliance.
So, so on that point, as I understand it, the, once we choose a, an implementation date, then our city, would the police department and also city personnel would kick into gear, get the plan approved internally by you, I assume Administrator Stevens. But then the, with, with a drop dead date looming, that also gives the police department a chance to perhaps, you know, maybe we need to print up some bills or something like that, some handouts for people that we could give, notifying people that have all of their belongings in a shopping cart that they're, that soon they're going to have to prove ownership. Essentially, as I understand the, the ordinance, is that if you can prove ownership, you're, you're golden, but if you can't, it's not yours anymore. Is that correct? Do I have that correct?
That, that's a pretty good summary. Yes, sir.
So how many, do you have a recommendation on days, just based on your?
Yeah, I really don't at this time, Madam Mayor. I give, I gave that some thought this afternoon, and we're still identifying our process. You know, we're obviously going to take a progressive enforcement approach, and, you know, we're going to work with our businesses to, you know, we're going to contact and identify abandoned or unlawful possession, opportunity for persons to collect their, their personal property, but then we have to arrange for storage. We have some of that identified already. We've been on this pursuit now with, just dealing with homeless in the parks and so forth, personal property collection and maintaining. So we've, we've got that much, but then we've got to figure out our, our pursuit in terms of contacting the business if they have the means to come down and collect it. Are we going to drop it off? Those types of things. So we're still looking at that, but I, I suspect 30, 45 days, we could have that well sorted.
The ordinance does say that the store needs to collect it within 30 days of notification, which seems pretty reasonable. Corey?
So in the normal course, this would be, assuming it was passed tonight and then was approved on second reading, we're looking at an effective date right around the first of November. You could simply say January 1st, which is a nice, easy date where effective that, and we could actually insert that date, that this will be effective January 1st, 2024. It gives a little bit of play, it's a nice, easy line in the sand that everyone will understand.
Can I get some clarification? If you do see a shopping cart that is rogue, that does not have documentation that they are owners of that shopping cart, that it will be confiscated, will the items also be confiscated and then stored? That way, I just don't want to have trash left behind.
Well, yes, ma'am, and we'll use the same process that we use currently when we're dealing with these camps, encampments that folks abandon and leave, leave property behind. That property which has an apparent value, some utility, we will collect, the rest we will discard, but we collect that in accord, in accordance with the policies and...
Yeah, and what you're asking about, I, I suspect is somewhat a shopping cart that is unattended. So if the shopping cart is attended, it might have someone's belongings in it, and in that case, the police department is not going to confiscate those belongings, they're just going to take the cart. But much like our, our process with, when people are camping, for example, and we discover their belongings, we store belongings, things of value, but, and the, I, just for example, what I always refer to as the half-eaten Snickers bar is not a belonging. That doesn't get stored, nor is any illegal, you know, any, any paraphernalia, any drug paraphernalia, any syringes. So we have the guidance already on what we, what are belongings that we store and what are not, but I, I want to make sure that, that council understands if, if that shopping cart is attended, we're not going to confiscate someone's belongings. They can figure out a way to take their belongings.
So I'm imagining if the entire state of California has this, and many, many cities across Colorado have, well, I still have a concern if somebody is attending the shopping cart, we just take the shopping cart, but they still have their belongings, there's no way that they can pack those belongings on their back, and I can imagine that there's going to be a lot of just refuse left behind because they're only going to be able to take what they can carry, and we need to be on top of that.
And I think that's going to, that's why I think the police department's going to need some time in terms of its implementation, because absolutely, I think everyone understands we don't want to make the problem worse when we discover the shopping cart. But by the same token, if these are someone's personal belongings, there is no basis to confiscate them.
No, I agree. We can't just like, oh, that's, 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 you know, it'd be a horrible act, but we have to be prepared for, like, I don't know, like, have some trash bags available for them to carry their things in, for them to decide and offer to take some of their trash if they, I don't know. I'm imagining people already know we don't need to re...
We, we work with people every day, Madam Mayor, to, to help them in difficult situations. So if somebody obviously had their belongings in that shopping cart, we're, we're going to do what we can to help them find a place to put it, helps, help contact somebody to come down and help them with that. So we're, we're not just going to dump everybody's stuff out on the sidewalk and, and go away.
And it's a legal place to put it.
A secured place.
Secure.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and just, just playing this out, if I was a homeless person and had more possessions than I could take, I, what I would do is when a police officer stopped me and took possession of my shopping cart, I'd say, you have the whole thing, let me know when I can come pick my stuff up.
Oh, yes. But that's you.
And in those circumstances, we would, we would follow our, our normal protocols and policy, and we would maintain that stuff for 30 days, and then we'd send a letter to council and we'd get rid of it.
Yeah. All right. Councilmember Dennehy?
Chief, I just have a question, because if the, the shopping cart has no identif- identifying markers on it to say where it came from and that, and the reason I ask this, because I have been to a few garage sales where there has been shopping carts for sale. Sometimes they put them out, and they, they put them out for casters, you know, but they, I've seen shopping carts at a few garage sales. What if a person has something that's non-identifiable from any of, you know, how, how do, how do we approach that? How do we, you know, if, if there's nothing to say that this came from City Market, Walmart, Safeway, what do we do there?
I think the ordinance is pretty clear, and if we can't establish that, we don't have a lawful right to proceed.
What if you can tell it's totally a Walmart shopping cart, but they scratched out the Walmart on it?
Well, you know, we're going to act reasonably, and if we feel, based on a totality of circumstances, that cart belongs to Walmart, we're going to confiscate it and take it back to Walmart.
And, and again, one of the violations is to...
To tamper.
Is to tamper with the signage. So that in and of itself. Now, you know, from an enforcement perspective, one of the, one of the discussions we had in terms of putting this together is in some communities, people use the shopping carts permissively and then return them. Under this ordinance, that's no longer allowed, and so we have to treat everyone the same, and if someone lives walking distance from Walmart and would normally have walked and then returned, that becomes illegal under this ordinance. We have to enforce across the board. It may trigger, there are some places I have seen what are akin to shopping carts that are personalized little carts that people make, and that might be in many respects what, what Councilmember Dennehy's referring to. That is not illegal under this ordinance, but a shopping cart that is, as defined, that we can tell, and I think we will be able to tell if it has been somehow defaced, because they are distinctive enough that I think we'll be, the police department will be able to make those distinctions.
Okay. Councilmember Schmisher?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Oh, yes.
If that's all right. That we approve Ordinance Number 9 Series of 2023, adding a new section to 9.24.000 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Theft and Disposition of Shopping Carts on first reading.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor?
And amending section three to read this ordinance shall be effective January 1st, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. In the item of discussion, I do just want to say for the record that for anyone that is experiencing homelessness, that if they by any way are seeking help for a better life or need a hand up, or they're really down on their luck, we have amazing, amazing entities and groups in this community that are helping people get back on their feet and having productive and good lives again. For those who are choosing not to seek a better life and maybe causing mischief or vandalism or other things that are really frustrating to our, our citizens and to our business owners, we are implementing the tools that we need to, to address actual criminal behavior. And this is just an example of one tool out of many that we're implementing to try and combat that because it is very concerning for our community, and we need every single tool that we can find to make it happen. And again, want to reiterate, we are not a sanctuary city for the homeless, and we are not accepting any money from Governor Polis to become so. I don't think we can say that enough these days. But is, is there any other discussion? And we'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion.
Okay, let's do it.
I move that the City Council enter into executive session for the following purpose: executive session to consider personal matter, personnel matters pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session specifically regarding the evaluation of the city administrator. Not yet.
You can do both of them in the same motion?
I can do both of them.
Yeah.
And to hold a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B regarding disposition of city property.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to end executive session.